Good evening and Happy New Year. And welcome to another exciting year. We have a short but important agenda this afternoon or this evening. And may I have our first approval of the minutes of September 9, 2009?
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
If it's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you. We'd like to take Bronx Community College item. Welcome President Williams. Her chance out of order because her candidate has a previous engagement. Welcome President Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. The college is asking approval on its recommendation for the appointment of Dr. Peter Barbados to the position of Vice President for Student Development and Enrollment Management. Dr. Barbados will join the college, hopefully, in the next month. And he comes with a strong academic and professional background in student development and enrollment management. He has served as Dean of Student Development at North Harris Montgomery Community College District, Kingswood College in Houston, Texas, as Dean of Student Affairs at Rarrett College, North Campus in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and most recently as Vice President of Student Services at San Matego County Community College District, Kenyahou College in Redwood City, California. In these positions, Dr. Barbados has created innovative initiatives, including a cyber orientation and a successful freshman year program. He has also taught developmental mathematics and student success career development courses at the community college level. Dr. Barbados received a Bachelor's of Arts in History and a Master's of Education in Counselor Education from the University of Florida and a Doctorate of Education in Higher Education Leadership from Florida International University. Dr. Barbados has published and presented on a variety of topics involving community college student success, including an upcoming article in the Journal of Developmental Education regarding students' perceptions about retention at the community college. He belongs to several professional organizations, including the National Association of Student Developmental -- I'm sorry, the National Association of Student Personnel Administrators, the National Council on Student Development, and the National Academic Advising Association, among many others. We're very pleased to have Dr. Barbados join us. He had heard about us long before he was a candidate for the position, attending conferences on the first-year college experience. So we're very happy to have him join us at the college.
Thank you. Well, I would just let you know that seldom do I get calls about people who are coming before the committee. But I must say Bronx Community College has been very aggressive in letting me know how excited they are about having you come onboard. And so, from what I've heard from the campus, and it wasn't from the President, they are really delighted about having you come onboard and looking forward to your tenure at Bronx Community College. So given that I pretty much put in my two cents about it, are there any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
It's been so moved, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Welcome to -- oh, City College, City University, Bronx Community College. I'm changing jobs today, so I'm in transition, so welcome to the community.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to address?
Yes. I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I'm very excited about this also. BCC's always been very close to my heart. My cousin actually went to BCC. I grew up in Washington Heights, and so he went across the bridge and graduated and is now at Rutgers and is very excited about his experience, his undergraduate experience. So as a motto, BCC is transforming lives. I hope to be part of that, to transform the lives of our residents of the borough of Bronx and of the city.
Thank you and welcome.
And we will now continue with our calendar. President Jennifer Robb, would you come forward?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, thank you.
And you'll introduce items B1 through B3.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very pleased today to present three resolutions for your consideration for naming opportunities. The first is particularly exciting. It's from the Tish family, in honor of their mom, Joan Tish, to create a distinguished fellow in Joan's name that will -- who will work on public health and public health policy, be based at our new Roosevelt House Public Policy Institute, will provide a Tish Forum and also a Tish Prize in Public Health. And this is a five-year gift, that is for $1.2 million, to cover the cost of the distinguished visitor, the prize, and the public health forum. So we're very excited about this gift, that it comes at a time where we will be opening Roosevelt House and our Public Policy Institute. And we have already recruited, with the, hopefully, your consideration and approval, we will be making a final offer to someone who will be just leaving the national healthcare debate, a major participant in that debate, and we believe that he will be a great addition to the CUNY conversation on public health. We're very excited to be moving forward with this program. The second resolution is for your consideration is to name our new MFA in Playwriting that the board approved about six months ago, the Rita and Burton Goldberg MFA in Playwriting. Rita is a 1946 graduate of Hunter College, was a schoolteacher and educator, and always very passionate about playwriting and the theater, and has agreed to endow this program, which allowed us to start this new MFA in Playwriting that we're very excited about, and then joins the Hunter MFA in Creative Writing, which is now, has a national reputation, as well as our many other arts programs. So we're very excited about this addition to our presence in the graduate world of arts education in New York City. And finally, in honor of a graduate who recently passed away, left us through her estate and through her husband, $100,000 to name a new classroom at Hunter College, which we were able to completely renovate and make very modern with up-to-date technology. Esther Glitter had two degrees from Hunter College, a BA in Accounting, and then came back to become a schoolteacher later in her life. And her $100,000 gift was made in the name of her mother, Bessie Dubowick, and that room will be named after the mom.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
The move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for consideration.
Executive Vice Chancellor Alexa Loog, thank you, Happy New Year.
Hi, yes, Happy New Year. And I'm very pleased to present to you today the, for your consideration, the appointment of Pyeong Gap Min as distinguished professor at Queens College. Pyeong Gap Min is a sociologist who's done groundbreaking work on the sociology of Asian-Americans. He began his CUNY career in 1987 as an assistant professor at Queens College, where his many contributions include establishing the college's Center for Research on Overseas Career. He's also been on the faculty of the Graduate Center since 1933, 1993, sorry. But in the amount of time he has been in his professional work, he has earned two doctorates from Georgia State, a PhD in Philosophy of Education, and a PhD in Sociology. And his research has received support from the National Science Foundation, the Russell Sage Foundation, and the Social Science Research Council. He has a national and international reputation, not only among sociologists, but also among ethnographers, historians, and policymakers. He's one of the country's leading scholars in Asian-American studies and in Korean-American studies in particular, and his work has been highly influential in the fields of race, ethnic, and immigration studies. And it's led to major theoretical advances in the understanding of immigrant communities and of ethnic conflicts. His work is known not only for its theoretical acumen, but for its methodological rigor. He has published five books. For example, one called Caught in the Middle, which is a study of Korean merchants in New York and Los Angeles, which introduced a very influential concept of the middleman minority to the field, and has won several major book prizes. He has another book forthcoming with New York University Press called Intergenerational Transmission of Ethnicity Through Religion. He, in addition, he has published hundreds of articles, edited texts, chapters, papers, lectures, and reviews. And all of this, not since 1933, but in many fewer years. Queens College and the City University of New York will be honored by Professor Min's appointment as distinguished professor.
The move.
Thank you. May I have a second? It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Vice Chancellor Waters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased tonight to present item B5, the continuation of military leave and employer-paid health and welfare benefits coverage for university employees recalled from the reserves to active military service. On numerous occasions since 2001, and most recently since January 26, 2009, the Board of Trustees has passed resolutions extending military leave and employer-paid health and welfare benefits coverage for university employees recalled from the reserves to active military service in response to the events of September 11, 2001. This resolution authorizes the continuation of these benefits through December 31, 2010, in response to the need for employees to serve in the armed forces in light of the continuing evolution of the response to September 11 into a wider campaign against terror, including military action in Iraq. Madam President, I present item B5.
The move.
Move, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Provost Stuart Seuss? Seuss. Seuss.
I've been asked by President Perugia to present candidacy of David Gomez as Vice President for Academic Administration, Program Planning, and Development at Kingsborough Community College. David has been a member of the CUNY community for many years. He served 12 years as many posts at Hostos Community College, rising to the rank of Dean of Faculty. He has been at Kingsborough for 23 years as the Dean of Instructional Service. He has also taught a very important course on multicultural children's literature for a number of years. He has, in reality, served the functions described here without title for many, many years. And this is in recognition for the service that he has given to the college, and finally giving him the title that he deserves.
Thank you.
I would just like to mention that my office has granted a search waiver to facilitate the appointment of David Gomez to this position in recognition of the number of years he has been at the college and the level of work that he has been performing without recognition of the title.
Thank you. Any comments?
The move.
It's moved, and may I have a second? It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and welcome to your new position. Would you like to address the committee?
Well, as Provost Seuss pointed out, it's been my privilege to serve this university for the last 35 years, and with the approval of this group and with my appreciation to the Chancellor and his staff, it is my hope to be able to continue that service, and hopefully, at the level that Provost Seuss so graciously indicated I perform. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Provost Howard Johnson, would you come to the table?
On behalf of President Pollard, I have the privilege, pleasure to present Dr. Moses Newsom for consideration by this body for the appointment to President or Vice President of External Affairs at Magrave's College. The President is confident that Dr. Newsom is prepared to promote the image of the college and communicate the value and the impact of the college mission to internal and external constituents in a manner that maximizes an understanding of the college role in educating and evaluating the kinds of things students need and also the community that we serve. He's also firmly believes that he can garner substantial support, resources from the public, private, community, alumni, and philanthropic sources to fulfill the college mission. The President is also confident that he will lead activities which will also promote an awareness of the college's success and achievements and bring credit, benefits, satisfaction, and fulfillment to faculty, students, alumni, and friends of the college. Dr. Newsom comes from Mississippi Valley State University, where most recently he held the position of Vice President for Economic Development and Public Service, and for the bulk of his tenure, has also served as the position of Vice President for Research, Planning, Community, and Economic Development, which spans almost 10 years. Dr. Newsom is credited with an extensive list of accomplishments and achievements validated by faculty, staff, and its university president, who indicated that, and I quote, "Dr. Newsom is well-respected by faculty, students, staff, and of course, the Greenwood-Lafleur community where he's been so active." He's served the Valley, Mississippi Valley University extremely well. We hate to lose him, but we're happy for his new opportunity. Additionally, I might add, in a recent article, the editor of the Greenwood Mississippi Commonwealth wrote, "Anywhere Mississippi Valley University might build business and community partnerships, Dr. Newsom could be found shaking hands and fostering partnerships." Dr. Newsom's credits include the following: He coordinated and supervised the development and the execution of the division budget that exceeds $9 million. He spearheaded the university's external funding totaling $12 million and received a grant that he offered nearly $1 million this past year alone. He has been known to be an outstanding state, federal lobbyist, and is credited with bringing Mr. Percy Watson to the state chairman of the Ways and Means Committee to the Valley and obtaining his support for their new wellness center. Additionally, he successfully lobbied the state legislators and enabled revisions of the state university formula and sponsored the state bond bill. On the federal side, he successfully lobbied Congress regarding support for the development of automatic identification technology, bioinformatics, USDA curriculum enhancement programs for Mississippi Valley State University. An outstanding fundraiser for community and university projects, Dr. Newsom led the effort to bring wireless internet service to the entire Delta, a $120 million project. He has established numerous partnerships with private governmental entities for the purpose of enhancing administrative, student, and faculty services. He's also Chair of the Greenwood-Lafleur-Carril Economic Development Foundation and Industrial Board and President of the Greenwood-Lafleur United Way Board, and his Vita indicates he holds board membership or leadership in numerous community economic and development organization. It is obvious much more can be outlined to describe Dr. Newsom's accomplishments and achievements, but it suffices to say that he comes to our college and to our university with substantial experience and expertise to lead our area of external relations. We are confident that Dr. Newsom will expand our services to students, heighten resources for our faculty, and broaden the opportunities and possibilities of the college throughout strategic linkages and external funding sources and strength, the institutional relationship with public, corporate, philanthropic, and community organization. It is a pleasure to present Dr. Newsom.
Thank you. Have a motion for approval.
May I make a statement, please? My office has granted a search waiver for the, to facilitate this appointment in recognition of Dr. Pollard's ability to bring in one critical position as he builds a new team at Magrave's College. This is Dr. Pollard's decision here.
The move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Welcome to the City University of New York. I suspect you'll find Brooklyn to be very similar to Mississippi, so would you like to address the committee?
Yes, well, first of all, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. This is a pleasure. This is an honor. I look forward to working with each of you, to working with, to enhance the goals and objectives of our President, and really to help bring Magrave's more into the community to provide additional support to the community through partnerships. We want to work with the faculty. It's going to take an effort by the faculty, the students, the alums, everybody that has any association or relationship with the college. But I am confident that with the support and encouragement that I've seen thus far and what I've heard, what I know about New York, having had a brother here, I've come here quite frequently, that it will work out to the betterment of all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, Dr. Linda Bernstein?
There is one faculty appointment with a waiver of the bylaws that requires the committee's approval, and this is item C4, which is the appointment of James G. M. Daphrell as professor with tenure in the Department of Mathematics in the Weisman School of Arts and Sciences at Baruch College, with a waiver of section 6.2. D2 of the bylaws effective September 1, 2010. The college strongly recommends this appointment, which has been reviewed and approved by the Offices of Academic Affairs and Human Resources Management. Madam Chair, I present this item for the committee's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
The move.
Second. It's been moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Items 2A through AFRA presented for committee's information only and do not require a report or a vote. Now we have a report from Vice Chancellor Waters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I need to make one comment about the information items. Item E, the appointment with a waiver for AFRA ship at City College has been withdrawn. It was erroneously placed in as a waiver and not an equivalency. I wanted to just take this opportunity to share with you some of the highlights of the, of the work done by CCA Corporate Counseling Associates, which is the EAP program that was voted in last, in October of 2008. And I just wanted to let you know how helpful it has been to have CCA available to our employees. So since October 1 of 2008, there have been 509 active cases. To date, 12% of utilization, comprehensive, meaning all types of services have been accessed. That includes employees and their families. There's been 6% case utilization, which are the number of people that dialed, or the percentage of employees that dial CCA's number. This is well above the national average of 3.5%. There have been 164 manager consultations, 132 onsite services at 25 locations. And as an example, CCA was able to provide onsite services, including brief counseling, here at the central office and at other locations immediately following the death of Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave. 4,575 individuals have utilized the web-based services by logging onto www.cuny/worklife. And generally, we have gotten very positive feedback on CCA and their way of handling the issues that come before them. And so we're very pleased to have that program available to our employees, and I just wanted to let you know that it is being utilized. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Vice President, yes?
Is there any provision that when they report, that they do an analysis of the sort of cases they've been receiving, so we can see if there's any institutional involvement or anything of relevance that could be addressed by the institution?
Well, not institutional involvement so much, but we know that, for example, there were 44 job-related concerns that were, you know, talked about. But again, this is a confidential service, so none of that is really shared with us except in gross statistics. We know 83 financial and/or legal inquiries were made, 103 family and relationship stressors. These are the type of things that are being discussed with CCA. But again, we don't get into the specifics there of what it is that people are talking about.
Any other questions, comments? There being none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second. Happy New Year. Happy New Year.